Calendar?
Here.
Short?
Here.
Goddard?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Le?
Here.
Bates?
Here.
Grant? Excuse. Okay. We have a quorum. Do you want your motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Both the executive session and regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, November 20th, 2018.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Goddard?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Le?
Yes.
Bates? Yes, thank you. Accounts payable?
To make your family for the building permit for a metal building at the wastewater treatment. And if there are any other questions, I can answer.
No questions. Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion. Moved by Gambino, seconded by Short. Goddard?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Le?
Yes.
Bates? Are there any special orders today? Reports of officers, boards, standing committees, and I believe we have the salary survey committees?
Yes.
Yes.
The what to do is have you review it as well. We're going to put everything off until January. I mean, should discuss, do we want her to come?
Where's she coming from?
I think she's coming to say one. And thank you, Kathy, for shepherding that. You did a great job.
Thanks. It was actually kind of fun to get to meet the group.
Good. Let's see, here. It's time now for public comments. Do we have any?
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here is the Chair of the Traffic Safety Commission. Life and work gets in the way. We've got no meeting. Well, the traffic trailers, we used to do things like work with the NFK on the crosswalk, safety, posters, and things. Child seat train. And working with old lot traffic. So, I'm requesting is that we put the traffic.
It's been proposed sometimes.
It's a recurring.
Yeah.
And I talk to people about it and.
Now, short? Yes. How long do you think you need?
Well, based on the current situation, well, one of the problems we are having currently is we have one person who's worked, BD Robinson, has supervised the rebuilding of his library and that's quite a. Ron Gillum is going to be gone for three months or so more through January meeting. Hopefully back in April, but we'll see. So, it's difficult to say. I've been on this commission now for far too long. And the only reason I stay on it is so that we have enough people to have a quorum so it can have a meeting. I'd love to get five people and then I can retire. Anyhow. Any other questions?
Have any questions or? Someone will make a motion that we inactivate the traffic commission for three months? And then look at it again at the April meeting?
While still keeping the applications open for.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Appreciation for that. Okay. Now, public comments. Is there anyone with a public comment? Yes.
Hi.
Hi. If you'll sign in on the sheet and give us your name and.
Meeting. Been a homeowner here for 18 years. I wanted to bring this up, I think that we just talked to Mr. O'Brien. And I've been looking to try to get on his committee with him. Being that I was coming down for being on the agenda later on in the evening, I decided to put a couple of things to play. Quorum has to do with the crosswalks, which has come up. My wife and I are traveling south on 101 and further in the crosswalk, which is across from here, the Pirate Coffee. There was a rainy day. Really no notification. Garage, lights. Maybe walk down this avenue. We are on the corner of Bay and Conway Street and that hasn't been there since 1940. Labor Love. I don't think we went out to the beach the first few years that we owned it. It was falling down from by the Richies and by the way that it's our memorial wall down there on the. I'm retired and I hope to be spending a lot of time here. We love Depot Bay. The main issue that I have is from my living room, we have beautiful view, looking at the bay, some bridges, and the ocean, and right in the middle of that is the spouting form, which is now the Depot Bay Brewery. Behind the brewery, it's turned into. The zoning for that particular property is an M zoning, an C zoning. You know, people familiar with that. I have an MP. Layout for the City of Depot Bay, not clear, but MP and then MC of what's been affiliated. There is a clause within the zoning that states that. Anything else listed here, that you can't have a restaurant or a tavern with that designation as MC. She hasn't been evaluated, but the eyesore that's been created is something that. My complaint form to you. Designation. Not quite sure because the zoning map isn't quite clear. The creation of attractive environment protects all present potential development with any possible lighting effects. I consider that a lighting effect. I'll read my complaint. Our house on the corner of Bay and Conway Streets in Depot Bay has a view of the bay, bridge, and ocean. Rear of the new Depot Bay Brewery is a direct site from my living room. Recently, the owners of Depot Bay Brewery had erected fencing and placed three large storage containers, garbage bins, barrels, and trucks, playing the view of us and every citizen in front of us. Although they were approved by the city by paying $10 fee, they are requesting the appeal of this permit to the following reasons. Location is on MC. This does not allow for manufacturing or. Clear vision area, section 4.030, off-street parking, loading requirements, item 7, 9, 12, 15, 18, section 4-040, and section 4.060, and 2C, and 2F. And I have the attachment documentation that are tied to those items. You know, to my chagrin, I even had to approach the board with this, where people try and find, look at that every day. I don't know if that was the intent of the zoning for that particular property. If it's a group hub, that's great. If it's a brewery and they're manufacturing, that falls outside of the zoning unless there's been some kind of change to the zoning laws or not. Brewery, also that there needs to be a curb. There needs to be changing of all parking spaces that are associated with that that are now covered. It does say in M-C for fencing, which is quite unique, that it is allowed. However, it says in lieu of that, that it's a conditional use that's permitted by, it needs to be subject to Articles 4, 5, 6, and 13, which of course, who wants to document that with the complaint? So, I thought I, being that I was here for an item that could be presented later on, and which directly affected my family, myself, and citizens in our community, I thought I would bring that up as well. So, those are my two issues. Thank you for your time. If anybody had any questions?
Yes, Robert.
Have you, Bill, have you gone to the planning commission? Or the city planner?
I do go to the city planner and discuss that with him when I was. I needed to actually have a formal complaint form in order for any action to be moved forward. In regards to the issue that will be addressed later on in the meeting, I sent Larry Lewis a rather extensive email concerning that subject back in July. A follow-up letter was done, and then none of it was communicated to the mayor of the city council. So, my assumption is that without a formal complaint form, nothing gets debated.
Well, the reason I was asking, I was asking about this particular issue, not the follow-up one that Bill will be talking about later.
But I did talk to him specifically about this, and I also looked at the permit that was.
Okay. Because you mentioned that you weren't certain about the ordinance, the zoning ordinance section about whether it be MP or MC, and that would make a difference. So, did you get any, you didn't get a?
I didn't, I didn't know at the time that it wasn't zoned commercial, to be quite honest. That's zoned marine. But in the City of Depot Bay zoning map, if you look at the map, and I did provide a copy in here, there is, it says MC, but then there's three little lines that are drawn that says MP right next to it. I'm assuming that's probably for the charter business. That's right next door and not specifically the Depot Bay brewery. My assumption, I haven't clarified that, like I said, most of this, I spent about 15 minutes reviewing everything, finding it on the internet and getting it out. And I did isolate the things that pertained to this particular situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Madden? Thank you, and thank you for driving up from Eugene. We will certainly be following up with your complaint.
Thank you. Should I just leave here?
If you could submit that into the record paper, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay. Unfinished business, I believe we need a motion and have a letter?
Yes. You're right, I would like to make the motion.
Got it. Let's move on now to the new business. Bill, Maddie, come back.
Oh, I?
I think you're listening, right? The next item up with your issue about 55 days.
Six, seven, eight. So, my neighbor, John, who was, I, he's here at the meeting. On about early part of July, mid-July, he came to the house and we found that there had been. East of our property. Literally, it comes up. Wrote a letter, an email. I talked to John after it happened, he was locked up there, and he told me that he owned property all the way to the street and that. Red Rock, and that he didn't need to retain wall and. So, someone in the fall off of here told me that. Falling off into my property, so I showed him that your problem is my problem. At that point, I wrote an email almost the next day, within a couple of days, and I sent it to Larry Lewis on July 7th. In that letter, it kind of goes through the whole scenario of what happened and. Why, if you like, the essence of it is that there has been damage done. My property has been damaged. I don't know if there's any restitution that could be done. I believe it was not done with permit, and I don't know how restitution. Now, the response was that Brady and I talked about this, Brady wanted to contact John, inform him of the needs and the plans. That he needs city approval for doing work. I was pretty good about it, though I didn't get all. By the email, which is quite. Not aware of the current process that is necessary. Waiting three months, and no. At that point. Last week, and I met with Brady, who was there, and Larry Lewis, and asked for the mayor of Conway, and she graciously did, she's very nice. And I don't know what to do at this point. I haven't secured a real estate tenant, and I'm almost at that point, where we might have to do something to the city or the donor to try to get something resolved here. It's dangerous, it's an eyesore. The stairs that led to that house have been removed. There's no access to that property without trespassing on my property or the neighbor to his east. And I don't know. Because she's probably not as far as. Except I could read my complaint. Sally and I have owned a property of 50 south plus Comiskey and Depot Bay for 18 years, and Anthony East of 55 days, could we use a front of this property without permit, causing us harm? The excavation is on our property line, creating a hazard, property devaluation, and eyesore. Additionally, the stairs that provide the only access to residence without trespass were removed. The action of the city to enforce restitution and now become a potential rosin problem that could exacerbate existing condition. Copy of email sent to Larry Lewis, pictures, copy of letters sent to John Woodmore on 8/18. Three months, nothing. And now we have rains coming, and it's starting to brood, based on some, again, you know, I'm getting educated with regulatory zoning laws and the requirements necessary to move vegetation and earth in that area. That's great. Voila. He's tripped in to try to make this a reality. I know that a lot of times he's done, I was supporting it, but I'm at a point now where I am, if you die, that this is in existence and no one's done anything about it, and here I sit. So, I'm venting somewhat, but in the same breath, if this would have happened to any of your properties, if you haven't seen it, please die, Bob. It's egregious, and it's a sad situation that it came to this. Could have easily been rectified, communication should have been done. I put a lot of things in here in my complaint, but part of the, one of the things associated with, first of all, it's going to have to be over each fee, and there's all kinds of requirements associated with it, it needs to be approved by the board, but a person violating a provision of this ordinance, which has to do with not getting permission and doing what y'all did. Upon conviction, be punished by imprisonment for not more than 30 days, or by fine not more than $500 a month. The violation of this ordinance shall be considered a separate offense for each day the violation continues. The convicted violator should be liable for all court costs. What I'm requesting is in the letter that I sent to John, there's no dates to be able to get any activity. In regard to putting plans together for the tank wall, for trying to resolve the problem, communicate with the city. There needs to be dates to get things done in time and matter. And if in fact the dates aren't, that there needs to be some kind of repossessions, either financial or legal. So, that's my request. Thank you for your time, and also if there are any questions?
Thank you. I have a question for Brady.
Sure.
A little similar work you've done.
Yeah, so I did, in the packet for the council, there's a timeline of when I. Time, we were told that there was just ID that was going to be removed. I know there's a typo in here from my computer, but there was utilities that were going to be secured at the time, and then actually, I guess, the entire bank was removed over a weekend, and that's where this kind of all started. And then I did receive some information from, Bill actually has my phone number, and he had contacted me with the concerns of the bank, and I did talk to Larry, and Larry said he received the email from Mr. Madden, and that's when I put the letter together to contact Mr. Woodmore. And right after I received the letter, we had met in City Hall, and he had been moving forward. Working with Larry to. Where I left it, not really setting any timeframe because it was moving forward at the time. So, recently, I did get some information back from Bill that really nothing's been, but a kind of a makeshift barricade was put up, and he said it wasn't sufficient. and, you know, it's just was kind of a sawhole or something. But, and then after that, I had talked to John a couple of times during some other events that were downtown, and just mentioned that he's still moving forward with the prevent tactics and stuff, but he's had a lot of other issues going on, and I said, well, you need to contact Larry or myself, and just let us know so we can get the info. This was all verbal stuff, nothing in writing, so I did...
From now on?
From now, yeah. Yeah, I will document, you know, the timeframe, but in short, that it does need to be addressed, and, you know...
Go by there every day to get anywhere, so do you. Yes, so do you, and that's dangerous, and that has to be fixed. And it has to be fixed before winter is over. We get a couple of heavy rains, we're gonna have serious issues, and public safety is involved. So I think we need to put together a timeline.
It's going to be three and a half months to get a contractor out at the house and put my concrete in for my garage, and nearly the porch. These are, I hired a structural engineering to come in and design the smooth stairs, and the retaining wall on that side, as well as something across the... Get him free, he'll be in there and put that in.
Is he the only contractor? We started... Save this because I'm having trouble.
Well, I was gonna say, the company around here, I found two that are worth a deal.
You end up with a bigger mess, isn't it?
And if you get, and I'm sorry, if you try saving money on this kind of thing, you're gonna end up with a whole lot worse deal than what you got right now.
You know, my concern is a public safety concern. Okay? And this is not a new issue. This issue has been going on now for months. It needs to be fixed. Anyone else have anything? Yes, Lauren.
I can speak to the difficulty of finding any contractor.
I can get it done in a month. Another issue in town right now, with a drain pipe that goes under the Blue Heron and it's flooding the shop out every day. I got a jackhammered up, do something. So, we got two issues there.
I would like the minutes to show that John's...
I went to look at it today after I saw these pictures, so that it appears to me that you've created another public parking space, that it will never be a private parking space, and of course, you can't put up a sign, private parking. So, it's, in a sense, it's adding to our much-needed public parking, not necessarily the best way to go about it. It is, it's truly unattractive.
We had a lot of water problems. Rains were coming off, and it came actually... Giving a huge amount of water there, just sitting there and oozing down the property to the east of us. So, what it is, we went in and put drains all across and helped the lady in the back get her water away from her building that was rotting in the bottom. We took it all down, and we found, and tied all of our gutters together and new drain lines. And as we took it down the side and tied it into the...
Start, start.
We recreated our water lines as well and put in a new meter. We found that our, the city's water came up within just a couple of inches of the road, of the surface. And that's why we put in that concrete pad to protect, new meter base. So, we tied all of the water, and it's not going anywhere else's property, and picked up the water from people behind us. And that's when we decided to get rid of all that, and our idea was, and really, we just kind of scraped it down, and, but we'll put something in there.
It needs to be fixed. It needs to be fixed. It is a public safety hazard.
I actually have a problem with, I guess, my understanding of public right-of-way. So, is it not his property?
No, it's the city, it's public right-of-way on Bay Street, so you need to get a permit to encroach, yeah. Picture in there shows that...
Here, when we have...
In this one, if you're...
...road, which was...
Wait, let him finish, John.
This photo.
Yes.
So, it shows that, and then on the neighboring one, it shows actually where the barnhouses, or, excuse me, 55 purchase barnhouse, but that's where the stairway were removed, it's right in the bottom there, and that's where the property line runs, up in there, and Mr. Madden's property is that inside corner, and that's, I don't have, like, and then if you look at the other photos, it's currently in the packet two, that Mr. Madden had taken, and that's this inside corner here. So, this is Madden's stair.
So, on the, is this a flat?
Yeah, that's off the county...
Flat.
So, the bottom lines that are at an angle...
That was the, that was what was vacated back in eighty, in the eighties, that you look at this triangle here on this page, that was when, that was what the county wrote up, because back in the eighties, this was owned by, Bay Street was owned by Lincoln County, and at that time, it was given to, a small article in there shows when the city was given that Bay Street, and they explained, yeah, they vacated that. Yeah. So, but yeah, that's actually where the property lines are.
Wouldn't that...
Where the round circles are are actually property pins.
Property what?
Pins.
Pins.
Yeah, so those...
Wouldn't that, I guess, the reason that...
We actually, I went around with Mr. Madden, and we found a few of them, but some of them we just couldn't find.
I guess, one of the things, and this really, I gotta admit, possibly has to do with very much about the complaint, or the problem, but doesn't that mean that those, that right-of-way goes into houses?
Yeah, it did, but that's why it was vacated, and then returned back to where it makes more sense, where the circles are, where it's away from the hogs now. And that's where the county said, this is where the road width is now, the right-of-way goes all the way up into the slot, but yeah, that's, actually, Bay Street is, where it's paved and everything, is actually on the gentleman's property that owns on the Bay side. It's Mr. Fay, Mark Fay, owns that, really, where Bay Street is, but there's a easement through there for the street.
Okay, so now, to another question, I guess, the cutout that he created, is it inside of these circles, or...
Yeah, it just kind of runs right up into that, it's all on the public right-of-way. Little bit went into Mr. Woodmore's property, and into Mr. Madden's property.
Thank you.
So, councilors, yes?
Just from the standpoint of public safety, something that I would like to see virtually media thing would be construction fence and along that thing. If somebody falls off that thing, it would be problematic, and something that simple that you resolve that stop.
I agree, because also, if the public parked there, that, it really looks unstable, as if it would collapse and harm somebody. Yeah, I'm very concerned. It also looks like the deck was about to collapse on that one corner.
We're gonna take the deck off and move it, it's gonna be a much smaller deck when we get done.
And is there any driveway to this house?
No.
No driveway?
No. The house was built in 1925, remodeled in seventy-eight, and what actually happened is the guy that owned the aquarium at the time was an alcoholic, and he sold off the driveway to this east, because his little cabin wasn't there, and so...
When you have guests come to the sanctuary, do they park in the public parking?
We're actually not home over, in little red coat for that right now, until Mrs. finishes. And this has taken a long time, because this has been very, very therapeutic for my wife. She's turned it into a little jewel box, and she's gentle to people, but the gentleman who were using the house that we own over, little red coat that we don't live in, I mean, he lived out in Morocco, but she has twenty-two hundred square feet there, and it sleeps eight people, and so, we're using that for parents' house to child, and...
Okay, I think what we need to do is, yes, Mr. Madden?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
There is, first of all, this was done on a public right-of-way without permission, without permit. Secondly, in the zoning laws, if in fact the retaining wall has to be eight feet from grave, which just is, it needs to be reviewed by the planning commission, and a public hearing needs to happen, we need to review the plans. I'm concerned with the relief from the property line not being within three feet. Where John's property, where my property, and where the easement intersect, and the retaining wall needs to be three feet from that before it even comes close. It's already encroaching on the property line, as we speak. The zoning laws say three feet from the line at a minimum. So, I don't want to, you know, I trust that these plans are valid plans, but I want to be able to review those plans, and I want to be able to make sure that they're fire the plans, not just plans that Johnson... Plans, I don't know if I've looked up recently, but Brady said he looked at plans five months ago. Was it always the same plan that Brady?
Yeah, it was on a, it was a smaller, it was on a piece of paper the size of that.
Okay, so those are...
They were pulling, and they were kind of...
So, that's my concern, is that it's gonna exceed eight feet, and it needs to be reviewed for part of the work being done.
That is true, that is what our regulations say. You know, let me think about, how does council feel of the idea that we get Brady to write a timeline? A timeline for doing the design and getting the work done, which includes, it has to be, he's right, it does have to be...
But a new plan, plus an encroachment.
Right, but, but this can't be a year timeline, Brady.
Oh, okay, right, an encroachment.
Right, this can't be a timeline that goes out of...
First of all, I'll have the concrete construction stuff, and then I'll meet with Brady, Brady, bring it together. And maybe get done, get it going.
Not miserable. Yes.
And then any additional construction, we've already got, what's gonna be done with the deck, and how that ties in with this, I want to make sure that it meets people's concerns.
That's, yeah, that's a separate issue, though, we're dealing with this right now. We'll deal with that when the time comes, yes.
What Mr. Madden brought up, about eight feet, I have not only my deaf in the room here, but I can't hear at all. So, you mentioned, if it's eight feet, then those particular guidelines go, I don't understand, so...
Yeah, section four dot zero six zero, which is in the packet I gave you, under provisions regarding retaining walls, have an eight-foot designation. If it's eight feet or higher, it needs to be, plans need to be submitted and be approved in the public court.
Okay, so that says, if it is eight feet or higher, so what happens if it's not eight feet?
I don't know.
But it doesn't matter, cause this is eight.
I'm not so sure.
I don't know, I'm looking at it. I guess we'll, we'll find out, and then have Larry review it, and I want to have Larry review the zone also, and double.
We'll give that a priority.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure, because there's other processes that need to go through with the encroachment permit.
Right, right, I understand.
Yeah, the deck needs to be approved, and then the floor, yes.
So, what does the council do?
Depending on, depending on how much paperwork and stuff they're gonna be doing, and what permits and stuff are extended past thirty-eight.
We'll deal with that if it happens.
Okay, so, in the interim then, is the council agreed with Mr. Woodmore, that he's gonna put up a construction fence above it to prevent any injuries, right?
Yes.
Or any parking there? There shouldn't be any parking there.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
People will park anywhere they can, there are lots of them.
Yeah, but once the fence is up, they will be able to...
Or the fence is gonna be up to prevent people from falling.
Falling down.
And also...
Also, I'll tell you what, also put a fence up against...
Yes, that would be a really good idea.
Okay.
Problem solved.
What do you have, Green?
Yes.
Quick question here, to put up this construction fence, are you gonna have to get on to this gentleman's property, Mr. Eaton, maybe?
Matt.
Matt, I'm sorry.
Well, you can probably put it down into the hole.
Well, it needs to be, you know, keep him, so if somebody's gonna walk that way, then you have to talk to him, and get, you know, make sure... that way, but then you have to talk to him and get, you know, make sure that he's okay with the fence up there, temporary fence, you know.
Okay, and, and Brady, maybe you will, at our next council meeting, two weeks, report back on progress to that date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'll make it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Uh, we had a letter of resignation from Austin Williams, who was Harvard Commissioner, position number one. I can't find my copy of it, unfortunately. Oh, good.
Oh, it's ready for me.
Oh, good. Oh, yay, thank you. Um, Austin moved out of DuBois Bay, and so he won't be able to continue his service. Uh, so we need to, uh, accept his resignation and then advertise to fill, to fill the position. Write our motion to that.
Yes.
Yes, I move that we accept the resignation. Call roll, please.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Calendar. Goddard?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
La?
Yes. Um, do we have any correspondence?
Can I have a brief second to stop this and restart?
Sure.